All right, it's seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is a public hearing for Edward Coulter, Minor Subdivision on Sprague Road. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the board on this matter? There being no one, we will close the public hearing and at 7:02. Next item, public hearing, Abbott, Revocable Trust, Minor Subdivision. Anyone here who wishes to provide comment to the board on that? Okay, there being no one, then we'll close the public hearing. We will forego approving the minutes. We're having technical difficulties in getting them transmitted, so we will take care of them next month. All right, Minor Subdivision, Edward Coulter.
Is he here?
Okay. I'll write folder, I've got so many folders. Are those called?
No, this is Abbott.
Coulter's on to your left.
This is Coulter, okay.
Sir, excuse me, should I come forward?
Yeah, Ed Coulter, yeah. The applicant's gonna say something to him.
Okay, on what? Oh, yes, sir.
I really don't have to present anything, but I just thought you might want me to come up with something.
I plan to use a folder.
So right here. Coulter, all right.
We are just waiting for, you have the final plans, right?
I got the final plans, they're up there. We sent it to county, county referred it back saying it was exempt, even though you're in the Ag Taxing District. They don't review subdivisions for lots or less. So yours and the Abbott subdivision were both exempt.
Okay, sir.
Well, Minor Subdivision. At this time, you have no other findings on the road?
No, not this one, no.
I will read into the record our letter from our engineer, Mr. Al Jager. Dear Chairman Corey and Lysander Planning Board members, I have completed my review of the final plat for the above referenced Minor Subdivision, prepared by Jeffrey J. Schultz Land Surveying and Mapping dated June 7, 2024. The plat as presented appears to meet all of the Town of Lysander code requirements. I would not be opposed to the planning board approving the final plat at this time.
Do you want to read part of the email from our planning board attorney with regard to opposition that came in?
Is that in that package? Where? I'm talking about Amelia's.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see it.
It's in the packet.
And this packet?
It should be in your packet, it's not, but I left everybody in the case.
Yeah, I don't think we got it, Karen. I can read it off the email if you want.
That's it, it's that email.
Yeah, I'll read it off the email.
Okay, yeah, because it's not in here. I'll let her forward.
Can we go back to her?
Yeah.
Yes, you may, yes, you may. What's that?
Nothing.
Oh, I'm getting the name right, yes.
Okay, here we go.
Yes.
He said four weeks.
Well, hey, it took two meetings, but we got it.
I know, you're doing fine today.
Yeah, it took two meetings, but we got there.
It's still early.
You didn't have to bring that up.
That came in yesterday from her, right?
There were two of them.
Yeah, yeah. It should be, it's right in the file as well, if you want to hand me the file, I can go through it for you.
Top two letters. Oh, it's the one from our...
We're looking for the one from earlier.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, what you did was confirm that...
That this subdivision meets all the rules and regulations of the Ag District?
Yeah, it's all the rules and regulations, and certainly, under our town codes, as was pointed out by the town engineer, is certainly a doable application of project.
Oh, she sent it to me.
We will attach a copy of that to the folder, so it'll be included by reference in the minutes. But basically, all our attorney did was confirm that your application meets all our codes and requirements, and is certainly allowed under our stuff. There was a question by somebody about doing that in agricultural... Anyone else have questions from any of the board members? Findings, an environmental assessment form indicates that the proposed... Got to get the right one here. An environmental assessment indicates that this action will not result in any significant or adverse environmental impact. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This action is consistent with the town's current zoning ordinances. This action did not require referral to Onadaga County Planning Board for their review and recommendation, even though we did, they said that they don't have that. This action will cause no adverse effects on public health, safety, and welfare in the neighborhood or district. I make the following resolution. Resolve that, a public hearing having been held, and there being no findings or grounds for a decision contrary to the laws and regulations of the Town of Lysander, County of Onadaga, or State of New York, final plat approval for a two-lot subdivision application by Edward Coulter for property located at 769 Sprague Road, Memphis, New York, part of farm lot number 92, and tax map number 043 dot dash zero one dash zero seven dot one, as shown on a map dated June 7, 2024, prepared by Jeffrey Schultz Land Surveying and Mapping. Is here by the way. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, so move. Resolve that, in granting a subdivision to Edward Coulter...
Coulter.
Coulter. You gotta change your name. I've got to have a lobotomy, though.
Strike that in the minutes.
I grew up next to a family attorney.
That was Coulter.
I've known the name all my life.
Yeah, I'm Coulter in Phoenix.
I'm Coulter in Phoenix, yeah.
Yeah, he was our town attorney forever.
Yeah. For property located at 769 Sprague Road, Memphis, New York, the planning board invokes its right to impose a fee of $250 per lot for one lot, in lieu of land for the development of parks, playgrounds, recreation, and open land areas in the town. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, so move. State law states that the applicant shall file the final plat in the Onadaga County Clerk's Office within 62 days from the date of the final approval, or such approval shall expire. The applicant shall also file one copy of the final plat in the Lysander Clerk's Office. Thank you. I gotta start getting rid of these things.
Just pass it to me when you're done.
All right, this one should be done. Okay, next, next item on our agenda is the Abbott Revocable Trust Minor Subdivision. This is...
I wasn't going to fill these, they're all finals.
Pass these over to Karen. This is Sprague Road. And this is Abbott. Is there anyone here representing?
There's one.
Hey, boy, I'm sorry, I pulled my glasses off, it's a red one, sorry. Any... I have to share that with you. Any member of the board have questions?
This is the same property that had the tower on the back corner, right?
No.
No?
This is the one on Doyle.
This is on the...
You'll see that one.
Yeah, this is Doyle, the other was...
It's coming, yeah.
That one's coming, but...
Yeah, yeah. I think it's on the list.
Yeah, that tower's over.
Okay, thank you. I will read into the record the letter from our engineer, Mr. Al Jager. Dear Chairman Corey and Lysander Planning Board members, I have completed my review of the final plat for the above referenced Minor Subdivision, prepared by CNY Land Surveying dated April 25, 2024. The plat as presented appears to meet all of the Town of Lysander code requirements. I would not be opposed to the planning board approving the final plat at this time. There are no other questions on part of the board members? Findings, an environmental assessment form indicates that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. There's a letter on file from Al Jager, Town Engineer, dated June 13, 2024, that has been made part of the public record. This application did not require referral to the Onadaga County Planning Board for their review and recommendations. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This action is consistent with the town's current zoning ordinances. This action will cause no adverse effects on the public health, safety, and welfare in the neighborhood or district. I make the following resolutions. Okay, I gotta have a date off that map. Resolve that, having reviewed the Minor Subdivision application of Warren Abbott as defined on a map dated...
4/25/24.
4/25/24. Prepared by Douglas Rees, CNY Land Surveying, for property located at 3451 Doyle Road, tax map number 071 dot dash 02 dash 547 dot one, Walden'sville, New York, is hereby approved with the following conditions. I don't believe there's any conditions associated for this.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, so move. Resolve that, in granting a subdivision to Warren Abbott for property located at Hicks Road, Walden'sville, New York... This is Doyle Road.
Doyle Road.
Doyle Road, Walden'sville, New York. The planning board invokes its right to impose a fee of $250 per lot for one lot, in lieu of land for development of parks, playgrounds, recreation, or open land areas in the town. We should vote no, as there is an existing house, and remnant peace will remain under agriculture. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? No, abstained, so move. State law states that the applicant shall file the final plat in the Onadaga County Clerk's Office within 62 days, from the date of final approval, or such approval shall expire. The applicant shall also file one copy of the final plat in the Lysander Clerk's Office. Let me put everything correctly.
Need one more map?
One map there, just a folder.
It's too bad Steve's not here, because those are perfectly rectangular shaped lots.
I need to...
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that. This is, this is Mr. Coulter's file there.
But we just did that one.
No, we put, we apparently were, that's, you got Abbott's file there, right, Karen?
Not the, what's that one there?
Yeah, because that's Coulter's file right there.
This is your next one for me.
And that's that one.
You can leave those there, that's fine.
Okay, here, this is for the Abbott. Okay, making progress. All right, new business, next item. Minor Subdivision Windsor Abbott, your revocable trust.
Okay, that one's Oregon.
That's Oregon.
Okay.
What do we miss?
You want the Hicks Road one, right here?
The first one is North Hayes Road, second one is six, I'll need both of them.
There you go. All the maps are...
The second one. Okay. Progress is important, right? Okay, where are the maps?
Jeff, put that one low down for me.
Yep.
Much bigger, need bigger people.
Warren, would you care to...
So there's...
Turn this a little?
There is this approximately six-acre parcel in the bend of Hayes Road.
Speak a little louder, please.
There's a six-acre parcel here in the, in the bend of Hayes Road, and I believe the town wants to locate a pump station there at some point in the future. So we currently have an easement showing for that, and we made the top two lots the minimum size for the zone, with the bottom lot, the one with the easement, being left as large as possible, so that there's more flexibility with that easement. The lot has an interesting history in that it used to belong to the parcel across the road, and when we went through the whole TDR thing and came up empty, the state made us subdivide it and attach it to the lot that's on the same side of the road. So, but that's either here or there at this point.
Sounds like it was both here and there.
Oh, that was... A lot of time... With nothing coming out.
Al, that looks consistent with the pump station and the...
Yeah, yeah, no, that's the location. You're probably all good, the lot widths should be fine, your radius on the curve is 305 at the right-of-way line, so even with your, or your length of the curve at the right-of-way line is at 245, so even with your building setbacks, you should be over 200. So we'll just need the building setbacks added and the actual lot front of the building line show on the final plat, but other than that, it looks...
Yeah, we'll take care of that with the next one. Any questions at this point? Resolve that, the planning board having followed the prescribed SEACER procedures and having received no comments to the contrary, hereby designates itself as lead agency for the Warren Abbott 74084 North Hayes Road, Walden'sville, New York, Minor Subdivision. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, so move. SEACER. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use intensity of use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character and quality of the existing communities? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect the existing infrastructure for mass transit, lagging or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public supply of water supply? No. Public supply of wastewater? No. Will the proposed action impair the character and quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resource? Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Wetland, water bodies, et cetera? No. Will the proposed action result in increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Resolve, the planning board having followed the prescribed SEACER procedures and having received no comments to the contrary, hereby designates itself as lead agency for the Warren Abbott 7484 North Hayes Road, Walden'sville, New York, Minor Subdivision application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, so move. Resolve that, having reviewed the SEACER regulations, determined that this is an unlisted action, and having reviewed the short environmental assessment form, and finding no significant or adverse impacts resulting from Warren Abbott 7484 North Hayes Road, Walden'sville, New York, Minor Subdivision application, the planning board issues a negative declaration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, so move. Resolve that, a public hearing be held at a date and time designated by the secretary on the application of Warren Abbott for a subdivision of property located at 7484 North Hayes Road, Walden'sville, New York, tax map number 064 dot dash zero three dash 29 dot one, for the development of three lots from a parcel of approximately 30 acres. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, so move. Okay. All right, this.
If it matters, the remainder...
That's where, yeah, where's the other?
If it matters, the remainder on that one is a lot more than 30 acres.
Okay.
I'll change that number.
She'll, she'll fix it. It sounds like it's a carryover from Hicks. Because that one's about 30 acres.
All right, now we're on the Hicks Road. The next item on our agenda, Minor Subdivision Windsor Abbott Revocable Trust, Hicks Road.
This is Hicks?
What is this?
That's Hayes.
Okay, so this is an extra file. I got two Hicks Road files here. Or Hayes Road files, here. This is Hicks, I got two Hicks.
One of the Hicks was the old...
This is the old one, this is the amended one, right?
This is the amended.
I'll put that one there. Map should be there. There we go. Al, you want the copy?
That's, that's gonna be the old one, Jeff. That's the old file.
This was, this is the amended file.
Warren, can I have...
Show me the map, and I'll tell you which one it is.
Okay. I'm just going by what it says on there.
It's one way to tell.
And this one's got the short form.
This is the...
That's the new one.
It's getting simpler.
Yeah, the Abbott's on the stone.
Too many files.
So the dotted lines on the map are the original plan, and the solid line is the new plan, one four-acre lot, that I believe a church is interested in. That's fully operational now, right?
Correct.
So we laid it out, as I told the surveyor to get me 200 feet from that north line, because I knew that's what you guys wanted, and that's 400 feet on the road, and the 440 to meet the four acres that they're looking for. And then I wanted the easement shown on the south side of that four acre right there.
Yeah, so I'll just kind of give the board a quick summary. So previously, when we did this, we, we were trying to avoid multiple curb cuts out onto Hicks Road in that location, so we had to put a right-of-way strip between the two lots, and there had, and two driveways come out into that right-of-way with a shared driveway or curb cut, so that if the remnant parcel was ever developed in the future, we didn't have curb cuts, it just kept the remainder, remaining portion of the parcel more from a planning perspective. In this instance, if a church is going there, it's gonna only have one driveway, and it probably isn't... probably isn't on issue because you don't necessarily want the church driveway going into a residential development per se. So, I mean, I don't know, is the 60-foot right-of-way even needs to be shown on this map at this time? It could be dropped off and I don't think it would matter because the remaining parcel isn't necessarily chopped up. The one thing I will say is this corner is kind of weird where the, I mean, I guess you could just square that off in the future and this becomes the cell tower lot in the future and then, you know, if somebody finds a way to, to develop back here, great. If not...
Well, and that was the question last time I was in when I asked if it should be perpendicular.
That's what the code says.
Parallel to this or perpendicular to that?
Yeah, the code says perpendicular, so...
So that's what you ended up with?
Yeah, it's an odd, odd configuration, but that's, that's what is, is recommended. It certainly, it'll obvious, it's certainly a conforming lot. It certainly limits the development potential of the area behind it to some degree because of the wetland that's there. But it's, you know, conforms. That's the bottom line.
It's a code.
Yep. Yeah, maybe, yeah, probably have to go around because this is the D C lot, I need to get that 100-foot buffer, probably.
100-foot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they have to, have to go around. Just have to see, you know, when, when somebody develops it, we'll see what they come up with. There's options.
I'd like to leave the, the right-of-way shown on there.
That's a good spot for it. It's hard enough away from the intersection that, you know, it's just a matter of this where you're trying to have, you know, trying to avoid having two lots in a row tie in all and then a few hundred feet.
Right. Okay. Any questions at this time?
None.
Nope.
Okay. Resolved that the planning board having followed the prescribed SEACER procedures and having received no comments to the contrary hereby designates itself as lead agency for the Warren Abbott Hicks Road, Balden'sville, New York, minor subdivision application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, some more. Short form environmental assessment. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies? No. Public or private wastewater treatment? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, air quality, et cetera? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Resolved that having reviewed the SEACER regulations, determined this is an unlisted action, and having reviewed the short environmental assessment form, and finding no significant or adverse impacts resulting from the Warren Abbott Hicks Road, Balden'sville, New York, minor subdivision application, the planning board issues a negative declaration. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, some more. Resolved that a public hearing be held at a date and time designated by the secretary on the application of Warren Abbott for a subdivision of property located at Hicks Road, Balden'sville, New York, tax map number 071 dot zero two dot five three, for the development of two lots from a parcel of approximately, it's more than 30 acres, so we'll put the rating up.
Mine is like 29.
Point, okay. It's good enough. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, some more. There are maps back. Okay. Pass down.
What's it?
Oregon? Oregon.
Yeah, right there.
This was Oregon?
That's Oregon.
Yeah, they should all, the final flag will, will all...
Yeah. Yeah, we got Zimmerman and Oregon. What's in there?
Those are the, the one, the one. The five buildings have that lines on the final flag. You always get them on there.
Okay, our next, next item on the agenda is the minor subdivision, Nancy Oregon Plainfield Road.
I think you're gonna be fine out here.
Need a map, Al? Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Okay. We were in here a couple of years ago and did a subdivision that were just two lots. It was one A and what's now three. That was just one lot and lot two going around these structures. Owners that come back, they want to cut this piece off or no longer using it for agricultural. They've put in a new drive up here so they can get up into the back field. So they want to cut this off and sell it as a residential.
Any questions at this time, gentlemen? Karen? There's no part two, short form. If there's no questions at this time? Resolved that the planning board having followed the prescribed SEACER procedures and having received no comments to the contrary hereby designates itself as lead agency for Nancy Oregon for property located at 7392 Plainfield Road, Plainfield, New York, minor subdivision application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Short form. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? No. Public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Resolved that having reviewed the SEACER regulations, determined that this is an unlisted action, and having reviewed the short environmental assessment form, and finding no significant or adverse impacts resulting from the Nancy Oregon Plainfield Road, Plainfield, New York, minor subdivision application, the planning board issues a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, some more. Resolved that the planning, a public hearing being held at a date and time designated by the secretary on the application of Nancy Oregon for a subdivision of property located at Plainfield Road, Plainfield, New York, tax map number 036 dot dash zero three dash zero two dot two, for the development of two lots from a parcel of approximately 49 acres. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, some more.
Thank you.
They're the owners, the applicant with Michael Carroll.
Fantastic. Tim Coyer, I news you in Romans, Lancer Bank. This is a five-acre parcel. It's one parcel right now at the corner of River Road and Kramer Road. It's zone R20 and NYSF E. There's an existing structure and house over here at the northeast corner of the property along Seneca River. We're looking to carve off this 3.23 acre parcel that's actually at the corner of River and Kramer Road. This parcel, the owner of this parcel, this is the Zimmerman, they own the whole thing. They actually wanted to keep this corner piece, that's why you see this little slipper going down through there. But otherwise, the applicant is looking to purchase this piece right here.
Just a quick question, Tim. How would that piece that the Zimmerman's are keeping, the additional frontage there, that was only 76 feet wide, so no, it does not meet their requirements for an additional lot? I was just looking at it as if that...
Yeah, they don't want to keep it to sell it or to create another lot. They just want to keep it to control that little corner there.
Okay.
It was an odd, odd...
It's an odd configuration, it is.
They, they're kind of dictating what he's allowed to purchase, so they, we had to, had to kind of go with what they wanted to do.
It's fine.
Yeah, I know.
It, it's not, non-conforming.
It's just odd.
It's just odd. It's just, it's just a really odd, deep lot.
Don't have much else?
Well, I mean, you could give it, you could put it in lot two.
Well, that's what we started doing, but they didn't want it.
That's fine. I, I mean...
Any other questions? Okay.
What is expected to be done with all this?
The remainder? Nothing at this time. They have any here? Do you have any?
I'm gonna put a hobby bar. I live, I live on Mystic Coast, I live right on the other side of Kramer there. So I'm gonna put like a hobby bar on the southern...
The southern?
No, on the, actually on the eastern border there. And then I'm gonna leave the rest of it pretty open. There's, there's lots of dead trees and stuff and I'm just gonna clean it up, but I don't have any other plans at this time for it.
Resolved that the planning board having followed the prescribed SEACER procedures and having received no comments to the contrary hereby designates itself as lead agency for the Michael Carroll, Carroll?
Carroll.
Carroll. For property located at 8744 Kramer Road, Balden'sville, New York, minor subdivision application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, some more. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning? No. At least not significant. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of the intensity of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change of existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? No. Public or private wastewater treatment? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater quality, et cetera? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Resolved that having reviewed the SEACER regulations, determined that this is an unlisted action and having reviewed the short environmental assessment form, and finding no significant or adverse impacts resulting from Michael Carroll, 8744 Kramer Road, Balden'sville, New York, minor subdivision application, the planning board issues a negative declaration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, some more. Resolved that a public hearing be held at a date and time designated by the secretary on the application of Marco, of Michael Carroll for the subdivision of property located at 8744 Kramer Road, Balden'sville, New York, tax map number 077 dot dash zero one dash 23, for the development of two lots from a parcel of approximately five acres. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, some more. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We have the maps. Uh, just make your, make your lines.
When you show up to a town and hand in all your stuff, it's more acceptable.
Right.
You play.
Yep.
Okay.
The way.
We don't have any files for the last two.
Four feet off.
Yeah, I'll receive, I'll receive PDFs.
Right there. Uh, next item is, uh, the way the public hearing will allow the chairman to sign the final plat, and this is Highland Meadows, lots forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-four on Giddings Trail.
Don't fold them, don't, if you're done with it.
Yeah, I gotta sign them at some point. And thirty-four. Hey, Al, any, uh, comments?
All good. These are the, the lot lines that were previously approved in the preliminary plat. This is, uh, one of those developments that the developer has, uh, pieced me of the final plats because the building process has been slow and he wants to avoid paying taxes on a bunch of lots that are undeveloped.
But these, they've, they've had a history of building them before we did this. These are basically empty lots.
They are still empty right now. My understanding is that they have buyers for them. They just haven't dug the holes yet, so.
I doubt he would be here if he didn't have buyers.
Correct.
Tell him the way, the way he's proceeding.
Yeah, I believe, so after these four, I believe there's only four left in this section.
Yeah, there's a couple others that still.
Yeah, I think there's, there's forty, forty-one, forty-two, and... Oh, there's, uh, I think there's one more in the old section that isn't, isn't, uh...
Yeah, one or two.
Yeah, there's a couple more in the old section.
Yeah, there, there's not many though.
Very welcome. Any other questions, gentlemen? Looks like we're looking at just approving the same thing we approved now for. Make the following resolution. Resolve that the Planning Board authorizes the chairperson to review the final plat for the one, one lot, one lot subdivision application of Highland Meadows Development LLC for property located at Highland Meadows, phase three J, lots forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-four on Giddings Trail, part of farm lots number seventy-eight and seventy-nine, and part of tax map number zero-four-nine-two-four dash three, zero-three dash zero-six dot four. And finding that all modifications and conditions have been met, and that the final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, and that any differences found are not significant, the Board authorizes the chairperson to waive the final plat public hearing and sign the final plat with the following conditions, and I believe there are no conditions.
There's none, I have the statements of escrow and they're, that's current.
What's that?
They're current on the escrow, so it's not.
That's what I was gonna ask, all fees are paid and the town has accepted roads and...
Yep, the next one though, we'll, we can't quite sign the plat yet because the town hasn't dedicated the road yet.
All right, so you...
We can get it out of the, we can get it out of the way, though.
All right. So in other words, I won't sign these until you give me...
These ones you can, the next one you can't. Whispering Oaks, you can't sign. This one's good.
This is Highland Meadows.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, so move. Next one is Whispering Oaks, section four, phase three, final plat.
I do have a couple questions for you.
Yeah, I knew you would. Okay, Jim?
Well, when Karen added this, I decided to drive over there, and I found an awful lot of grading that needs to be done. Uh, there's a lot of extra dirt up on the high part. There was one cellar already put in, uh, either four or five, I'm not sure where it was, uh, and behind it, it's like a drop-off, and it's, the whole area from three to eight, there seems to be quite a drop-off, but I don't know where the, what I was looking at, how far back the property line actually went. So I have some concerns as to what's gonna happen and why did they put in a cellar before, uh, they did their grading?
So, so there, the, all, all of those lots are fill lots, all those lots do need fill behind the houses, all those lots will probably also be developed with walkout basements. Uh, there is some cut on the lots on the high side that needs to occur, and that fill needs to be brought down to the, to the low side. And really, from our perspective, um, this is not uncommon with subdivisions, for them to have to move dirt as they're developing and building houses. Uh, and they may need to import some dirt on this one.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised.
There is some, like I said, there is some cut on the high side that still needs to happen as well, but, um, yeah, there, there may need to be some fill brought in on lots five through eight.
When do you let them start to put in basements before some of that is done?
So our code allows for, uh, two lots, or two homes to start construction on a subdivision with preliminary plat approval.
Right. Well, if it's a walkout basement, that, that's why it's a drop-off, right?
For sure, yeah.
The other concern I had, I could see some houses down below this. Is there gonna be any kind of a flooding problem?
There is a cutoff swale that, uh, needs to be constructed as well.
So that, that's not done yet, though?
It is not.
Needs to be.
You see this easement behind lots, uh, six, seven, and the corner of eight along five, there is a swale that needs to be cut in there. And that is on the.
That's on the plan, right?
Yeah, and it's on the punch list that the developer needs to do before we take dedication of the roads and utilities, so. Correct.
You're aware of it? You're watching it?
On top of it, yes.
You're gonna keep something from bad happening?
Correct.
Okay. Now, that was my only concern.
Correct. My understanding is he has, uh, I think, what is there, eleven lots here? Um, he has seven of them sold. Uh, so, the, he's got builders that are anxious to get started, so he's pushing his site development contractor to finish up the grading and, uh, you know, so he can vote the securities and get dedication of their own utilities. Uh, you know, he's, he's pushing to, he's not gonna make it, but he's pushing to have it on the, uh, agenda, the next town board meeting agenda, but it'll probably end up being in the July agenda. So Jack, you won't sign the announcement until after that board meeting.
Yeah, correct. So Whispering Oaks, we just keep the maps and that one's good, go. Any other discussions? Because this is very consistent, it is the preliminary plat.
Yeah, it is the preliminary plat, uh, no changes.
No changes, yeah. I make the following resolution. Resolve that the Planning Board authorizes the chairperson to review the final plat for the twelve lot subdivision application of Cabbage Patch Partners for properties located at Whispering Oaks, section four, phase three, lots one through eight and lots thirty-one through thirty-five, Rubicon Road, part of farm lot number seventy-eight, and part of tax map number zero-four-nine dot one dash zero-five dash zero-one dot zero. And finding that all modifications and conditions have been met, and that the final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, and that any differences found are not significant, the Board hereby authorizes the chairperson to waive the final public plat hearing and sign the final plat with one condition, there has to be approval.
Uh, dedication, town has to take dedication of the roads and utilities prior to signing the plat.
Right.
And that won't happen until all the rest of the stuff we talked about.
You got it.
Okay.
Okay, the, the condition placed on this is that the town has to take dedication of the roads and utilities prior to the chairman signing the map. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, so move. That concludes our agenda for tonight. I want to thank you all. I will make a motion that the meeting be adjourned. All in favor? Aye, opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned, what is it, eight? Eight oh five? Two, eight oh two.